God bless you, my brothers and my sisters in Christ Jesus, our risen Savior. And so that we thank God for another day, matter of fact, another week, another month that He have smiled on us. Another week, another month that He has set us free, and most of all, He is good. He's good and He's gracious to each one of us and center them. If we have any good sense, we'll tell the Lord, thank you. So then we greet each one of you in the marvelous, majestic, mighty name of Him who does our things well. To all of our New Hope United's and to all of our friends and family that shares with us during this hour each week. And so then we thank God for you. I want you to just take a quick moment and inbox or text or call someone and let them know that the New Hope Number One Baptist Church here in the great city of Thomasville is on doing their weekly Bible study. And certainly it would do them good not only today, but in the days to come. Suddenly our prayers goes out to all of our seeking our shitties and those who are in hospitable, those who are in commalescent facilities and those who are at home and those who go into seasonal bereavement. Our prayers are with you and thoughts, your inner thoughts. Just the reality that the deaf angel is still rolling, the Hearst wheel is still rolling, the deaf angel is still visiting. And certainly we're praying for your strength and your comfort. Let us pray. Gracious God, our Father, we thank you today for all your many rich blessings that you continue to bestow upon us collectively and individually. God, we praise you because of what you continue to do for us. We worship you because of who you are. Oh, God, we love you. We magnify your holy and righteous name. We ask now that thou would look on us with our pity, our compassion, our mercy. God, we stand, proclaim and confessing that we are weak, but we know that you are strong. Father, we've done some things you told us not to do and we find ourselves doing some things that you, according to your word, that was contributed to your word. And then we find ourselves not doing what you told us. God, we ask that you will forgive us right now. Pray that you will cast our sins in a sea of forgiveness that they may not rise and condemn us in that judgment day. God, we praying now for mankind everywhere. Praying, God, that you stretch forth your hidden virtues, touch those who have all manners of sickness and disease. God, we pray now that thou would just move by your power and by your spirit that unsaved oppression that is on their way to hell. God, we pray that thou would touch their minds and their hearts before it's everlasting too late. God, we pray that thou would give us the boldness and the strength to do what you would call us to do, to be a witness of you. And God, we praying now that thou would just bless us now. And we pray that you would keep us in your keeping power, meet the needs according to your peoples, according to your riches and glory. And God, we're going to give you the praise and the glory in advance. We ask now that you come in the person of the Holy Spirit. Touch our specially ears that we can hear, eyes that we can see, a heart that we can accept what you will have to say to us on this day. We ask now you let the words of our mouth and the meditation of our heart be acceptable into thy sight, oh Lord, my rock and my redeemer. And all the children of God said, amen. All right, we want to continue in our discussion and steady on what God's want more in that twelfth chapter of the book of Romans. And we want to, want to look back at that and kind of take those verses apart as we still dealing with Epiphany, this season of Epiphany, our gift to God. And we want to make sure that we present God our best. We want to make sure that we give God our best. And so we dealt with in that twelfth chapter of Romans, where we dealt with, "I persecute you therefore." And we dealt with that. I want you to remember when he's talking about persecute is that, is that, 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 that's a military terms. Remind, remind you what I said is that, that persecute is that to come along aside, to encourage, to urge, okay? It's, 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 it's to, when you look at it in the terms of military, is that to call to attention, we are soldiers. That's what, that's what the church of yesterday years used to say, we are soldiers in the army. We got to, we got to fight. And so, so it's, 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 it's a call to attention, a call to together. He said, "I persecute you." He, he, he's encouraging, he's urging, it's a, it's a urgency, it's a plead. It's a challenge that the Lord is, is calling us to. And he said, "Therefore," so we dealt with that and with that word, "therefore." And you have to go back to the first chapter of Romans and deal with what he had to deal with before he get to that word, "therefore." And so let's, let's look at what he says here. He said, "I persecute you therefore brethren." All right, he talks, he's talking about brethren. It's, he's not just talking about anybody. Paul is begging the Christian, he is begging the believers to, to come along, let's, 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 let's get together. Let's do what we have been called to do. He, when he use that word brethren, he is not, he is not using it in an ethic sense. He's not, he's not talking about Africans, America in general. He's not talking about the Cajuns or Asians. He's not, he's not talking about brethrens as far as in the ethics arena, but he's talking about it from a spiritual sense. And it's just like in second, Chronicles seven and fourteen is the same reference that he's talking about, "If my people, if my people, which are called by my name." And, and, and so may, may, may you want to, may you want to write this down as far as understanding that, that every, all of us are called, that there are at least five calls that we have been called to. The first call is that we've been called to birth, we've been called to birth. Is, is that we've been called to birth. You and I, be frank with it, we didn't have anything to do with that. Our, our parents, many perhaps did not have us on their mind. And, and, and might have been whatever the ramifications around it. It is that eight or nine months or however, you and I appeared on the scene. So, so they, they, they perhaps were having a little fun. And that, 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 that is, that is called the birth. That's the first, that's the first call. The second call is, is, is the call to salvation. Is that we, we, we are called, Paul talks about it from out of darkness. Into what? To the marvelous life. Yeah, that's the second call. We've been called out of darkness into the marvelous life. Not every, not everybody in the world heed this call. And that's why, that's why we have to understand there's a difference in this term brethrens. Is that all of, all of us are related, all of us akin to God by creation, but not all are kin or related to him. It's good teaching right there, by redemption. So this is what he's talking about when he talks about called brethren. And then the third call is that we've been called to death. Is that, is that, I think the writer of Hebrews says in that ninth chapter of Hebrews, what, twenty-seven or that twenty-fifth verse is that, "It is appointed unto man once to die." Yeah, so, so we, we, we going, we going to, we going to die. That, that, that is a possibility that if Jesus continued to terror, is that we're going to have to face the call to death. And also in that ninth chapter of Hebrews, that's the fourth call, is the call to judgment. Is that, is that we're going, we're going to, that's the fourth call. We're going to be called to judgment. We got to stand at the bema seat. We got to stand and give an account of the deeds, our work that we have done here in this, in this life. So that, so that, so that, that, that's, matter of fact, that's the, that's the, that's the call. Is that after, well, after death, then you have the call of the resurrection. Okay, it's going to be in that order. It's going to be the call to resurrection. Is that we going to, we, 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 Paul talks about it in First Thessalonian. Is that those who died, is that we're going to be resurrected. Those who remain going to be cut up. So, so you got to, let, let, let's put it in its proper order, okay? Called to birth, called to salvation, called to death, called to resurrection, and then fifth, we're going to have the call of the judgment. And at the call of judgment, that's where the crowning, that's where we're going to get our crowns. All right? And so, so, so when Paul talks about, let's go back to Romans. Let me say it again, just in case you're taking some notes, there are five calls. And the call to birth, you didn't have anything to do with that. We don't have anything to do with that. The second call you do, we do have something to do with the call to salvation. We believe, we accept, we ask for forgiveness. All right? Called to death, don't have to worry about death if you're in Christ Jesus. Okay? Called to resurrection. Called to resurrection. Best security that you and I could be is in Christ. We don't have to worry about whether we're going to be forgotten. As long as we is in Christ, we're going to be forgotten. Is that things going to be well. And then at the call to judgment, if you're taking care of them, the first three, after the birth, the call of birth, if you heal, heed to the call of salvation, is that you don't have to worry about judgment because the judge and the lawyer, the eternal, is going to be able to handle our case, okay? All right, so he talks about brethrens. He talks about, he talks about brethrens. So he does not use it in the ethic sense, but he uses it in the spiritual sense. Those who of us who are already saved, okay? Those of us who are sanctified, who sit apart from the world, who are filled with the, with the Holy Ghost. And so, so he's talking up to those. I want, I want, I want us to get a good understanding when you talk about the brethren, those who are already in the church, who are, who are already saved, singing in the choir, serving on the, the earth ministry, the deacon ministry, the trustee ministry, those who of us who give tithing, who are, who are preachers, who are teachers, okay? Those of us who are already saved, is, is that, is that he is bringing to our attention that there's a challenge that is before us. That, 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 that's a challenge, that's a urgency, okay? And I want, I want us to understand this. I want you, I want you to hear me when I said this, is that, is that God is not interested in you and I when we got saved, but He's more concerned in what we have done after. We are saved after. Oh, Lord, help us today. Let me say it again, is, is that, is that, is that God is never interested in when we got saved, but He's more concerned, He is more concerned, He is more interested in what we have done since, after we have been saved. Okay? So, so, so that's, so that's, so that's the question that is before us, is that what have we done since we've been saved? Okay? Since, 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 since we are past christmataid and recognized and accepted a gift from God. When someone, someone give you a gift, it is, 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 is the best thing to do out of reverence and out of respect is to receive the gift. But after you receive the gift, what do you do with it? So Paul is urging the saints of God to do something about, to do something that they have not already done since they've been saved. And then he uses the, the phrase, mercies of God. "I persecute you therefore brethrens," by the mercies of God. Let's stop there for a moment. Let's stop there for a moment. And this may be the only part that I may get Hannah on today, is dealing with the mercies of God. Now you have, we have to understand what is mercy and what is grace. We have to get a good understanding, the difference between mercy and grace. We have, we have, we have to get a good understanding, even though both of them are walking together, even though I love to use the cliche of that they always walking together. They are twins, mercy and grace. They are twins, mercy and grace. They, they, they are, they are, they are twins, mercy and grace. So we have to get a understanding, what is grace? Let's, let's, let's see, can we find out what grace is? And I know y'all know, grace is what God's unmerited favor. God gives us what we don't deserve. Okay, and then when you look at mercy, mercy is when God doesn't give you what you do deserve. Grace, God gives you what you don't deserve. And then mercy, God doesn't give you what you deserve. And then mercy, God doesn't give you what you deserve. So, 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 so when you, when you start, when you start thinking about that, I'm going to give you a good example in a minute, but I want you to write these down as far as giving a distinct difference between mercy and grace. Is, is that, is that, is that mercy is the love of God that He has for His children in spite of our shortcoming. In spite of our shortcoming. Mercy is pity, pity, is compassion. Mercy is pity, pity. Is having kindness toward people, that's mercy. Toward people, that's mercy. What's mercy? Mercy is forgiveness. What's mercy? Mercy is forgiveness. What is mercy? Mercy is a God's patient. What is mercy? Mercy is a God's patient. That we see in action. Even though we deserve punishment, is that God still has and He still shows patience. Another good working definition of mercy is, is that it has to do with love responding to one's need. I, I, I'm not, I see the need and I moved. When you think about the Samaritan, a, a, a man that, that, that had mercy, showed mercy on that, 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 that man that was traveling from Jericho to Jerusalem. Thinking that tenth chapter of Luke. With thieves and robbers beating him up and robbed him. Levi and a priest came by. They looked at him and passed on the other side, but then here come a Samaritan. Not only did he see the need. Not only did he see the need. He had compassion on him and then he tended to his needs. And then he tended to his needs. It comes unexpectedly. That's mercy. It comes unexpectedly. And when you kind of look at the difference between mercy and grace, is that a good analogy of it is, is that, think about it as far as one of your children or one of your child. Get one of your best china. China in, I know, I know this generation don't have, you know, uses the fine china like we was coming up, is that they got everything is plastic. Plastic forks and plastic knives, cups, everything was, you know, it's most of plastic. And, 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 but, but when we was coming up, I was coming up is that when guests came along, came in, is that grandma would get the best china out the china cabinet. Well, think about it, one of your children or child get, you tell them to clean up, wash the china and, and all of a sudden, while they are washing or cleaning up the china, putting it back in the china cabinet, is, is that, is that that child dropping break that particular piece of china out of carelessness or to the point that it didn't want to, it didn't want to wash or clean up the china. Now, when I was coming up, is that when I did something like that, especially when I had an attitude of didn't want to clean up, wash the dishes. Is that grandma, you know, was sitting there, you don't get in there and wash them dishes? Is that, you, you, you going, you going to get a whooping? Now grandma laid down the law. And the law was that if I didn't clean those dishes, that china, that I was going to get a whooping. That's the law. Now, she already know I didn't want to clean the china, but what you think about it? If I mess around now, out of laziness and out of disobedience, I drop that china, that piece of china, that, that, that plate and break it. Now even though the law says, she already said, I'm going to whoop you. Says, she already said, I'm going to whoop you. But then instead of her whooping me, is that she comes along and cleaned up. She get a broom, get a dustpan. She get a broom, sweep up the broken plate, the broken. Sweep up the broken plate. I'm standing there crying before she even touched me because I know the consequences. I know what the law, I know what her law said, you going to get a whooping. Don't, don't miss the point now. She, she had put the law down that I, that I'm going to get a whooping. I'm standing there crying. And what she does is that she get a broom, dustpan, instead of making me do it, she is doing it. That's mercy and grace. That's mercy and grace. Mercy says that she didn't whoop me. Mercy says that she didn't whoop me. She, she didn't whoop me. That's mercy. She didn't whoop me. And then she turn around and, and, and give me some ice cream. That's grace. Give me some ice cream. I deserved it. The whooping. But instead of her giving me the whooping, is that she gives me something instead. That's what you call grace. That's what you call grace. Mercy, I didn't get what I, what I deserved. Mercy, I didn't get what I. But grace, I got something better. And so, and so, and so Paul begins to elaborate on the mercices of God. And so, and so in order to understand the mercices of God, when he says the mercis, the mercices of God, is that you got to go back, you got to steady from chapter, chapter one on to chapter eleven. Okay? I want you to write these down, from chapter, from chapter one to chapter eleven. It, it is that, is that Paul, I want you to think of all the mercices, mercices of God, the mercices, mercices of God. He explained them to us from chapter one to chapter eleven. Okay, the first one he talks about, talking about the mercies of God, what, 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 what God have done for us. Talks about justification from the guilt and the penalty of sin. That, that's, that's the first mercy of God. Then he talks about the adoption and Jesus and us being identified with Him. And Jesus and us being identified with Him. That, 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 there are at least eleven mercies of God that Paul identifies from chapter, uh, uh, chapter one to verses, chapter eleven. The third mercies of God is that God places us on the grades. We, we, we are no, we are no longer under the law. But we're on the grades. Paul said the law was just our schoolmaster to get us. Paul said the law was just our schoolmaster to get us to grace. And since, and since, 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 since grace abided. Is, is that, is that, is that, is that since the law condemned, is that we see the mercy of God. Look at the mercy of God, is that we are placed on the grades. God's relief at Christ's expense, not the law. And then fourthly, is that we've been given the Holy Spirit to live within. The Holy Spirit is, is, uh, working within us. Not only does he lead us and guide us, but he cleanses us. That, 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 that's a work that takes place, are you listening to me? Within, that the Holy Spirit does. The fifth, uh, thing that mercy, the mercy of God does for us is that, promise of help in all of our affliction. Yes, we're, we're gonna be afflicted. But, uh, but God promised us some help. He's gonna help us, okay? The sixth mercy of God is, we, we ought to have the assurance of a standing in God's election, since, since we have been, uh, placed in Christ Jesus. Is, is that, is that, uh, even though may not be direct descendants of Abraham, but since we are in Christ, we are heirs of Christ, heir of Abraham. We, we, uh, we, we have been elected, we got some election in Christ. Whether you are Jew or Gentile. Whether you're born a slave. Whether you're male or female. Whether you circumcised or un-circumcised. Okay? We have, we have, we have the assurance of standing in God's election. What he promised Abraham in Book of Genesis, is that we too have, um, have claims to, uh, the promises that he made to Abraham and his descendants. Praise God. Me too. But I have to be in Christ, I have to understand, uh, the promises that he made. And then number eight is that we ought to have, because of the mercesses of God, is that we ought to have confidence of his coming glory. Well, we ought, we ought to have confidence, he's coming back. Oh yeah, he's coming back. If I is going to behold him. And, uh, number eight is that we ought to have confidence, is that, uh, there's gonna be nothing that is gonna separate us from the love of God. You and I have received that from, from God. Is that, is that, is that there ought to be something embedded in each one of us, is that there is nothing, not even death, not even height, there's nothing that is going to be able to separate us from the love of God. And then finally, the mercesses of God, we ought to have confidence in God's continued faithfulness. There's nothing slight in God, God is faithfulness, his faithfulness, he's faithful. Whatever he said, whatever he promised. Is that we ought to have confidence. We ought, we ought, we not, we ought to not be in the position that we allow the devil to cause doubt, like he did with Eve. Of doubting what God said. He is true to his word. Are you hearing me? He's true to his word. And when you, and when we, and when we start thinking about the mercesses of God, the mercesses of God, is, is that, is that we ought, we ought, we ought to develop our spirit, our confidence. That God continue to be faithful. Okay? He, he continue to be faithful. And so that's what Paul is urging us as believers. That's why he reminding us. That we all, that we, that we ought to have a desire, we ought to put forth every effort in giving God more. Why? Because of the mercy that he has shone toward us. And we had to put ourselves in a position, listen to me now, we got to put ourselves in a position, to offer ourselves to God as he works his mercy in us. No, he's not, he's not through working within us, that, 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 the work that he begun in us, is that he's still faithful to complete it, to finish. But we, we, but we must offer ourselves to God. So that he can continue to work his mercy in us. Matter of fact, is that, is that what Paul is saying here in this, in, in this, um, in, in this verse, is that God is commanding us. He's commanding us, he's urging us. He don't want us to be in the position as the heathens. What the heathen, uh, practice is that, is, is that they are prone to sacrifices in order to attain mercy. That, that what, that what was the law had required. But since we are on the grades, is, is that, is that, is that, is that our biblical position now, is, is that, is that divine mercy provides the basis of our sacrifice as the feeling responds to us to do what God has called us to do. And that is to do more since we've been saved. And listen to what God said, I'm, I'm gonna leave you alone, I want you to chew on this for the next several days. Is, is that, is that, is that since we have, uh, 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 studied and since we have been taught about, um, uh, what God have done for us, is that how we awaken to the realization that we have a responsibility. Many have not. Many have not. So let me leave this with you. When you look at the mercesses of God, think about it, think about it. If each and every day, God allow them twins, they wanna write this down, they wanna write this down. If he allow them twins, what their names are, what grace and mercy. If he allow grace to wake us up. And then turn around and allow mercy to wake, and to, to get us up. What are we gonna do between the next dawning of the day? He turn around, we don't ask for it. But he give us those, two twins. Lamentations say every morning, we wake up, we got a brand new mercy. And since we don't know if we on the wake up call for the next day, but since he allow grace to wake us up, and then he allows mercy to get us up, then what are we going to do? What do we do after he does all that for us? Think about it, think about it, think about it, think about it. He don't allow, he don't allow. Matter of fact, it's not in his divine plan for us to be idle. But he expected more out of us. May God bless you and God keep you. Is our prayer, I just wanted to deposit that into our spirit and to challenge us, is that let us think about what God have done for us. And if he don't deserve anything from us, then we have a, we have an argument on our hand when it comes to what God wants more out of us. If he have not done anything for you, just allowing you to be on these Monday shows as many years and days and months and weeks. If he ain't call you for anything else, just for breath, then you and I don't have a reason to give him more. But I'm just crazy, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just sold out, I'm just in love with him. And I wanna give him more. God bless and God keep you is our prayer. Join in with us next week as we continue, um, on this study of, uh, God wants more, uh, from us. Let us pray, grace of God, our Father, we thank you for being so gracious and so kind to us, that you saw something in each one of us that we did not see in ourselves. Thank you, through the work of the Holy Spirit, you touch our mind, you touch our hearts, before it were ever lasting too, too late, to yield our will to yours. Thank you for saving us. Thank you for, uh, not allowing what was due unto us just as to have its way. Thank you for your grace and your mercy. Lord, we are indebted to you. Thank you for the breath that you allow us to breathe. Thank you, that God, for allowing us to be able to put one foot in front of the other. Most of all, thank you just for a reasonable portion of our health and strength, thank you for saving us. And then God, we praying that our, uh, awakened, uh, our God's spirit in us to do what you called us to do in these last ever days. Lord, if there anything that we fail to do that you told us to do, forgive us. Then God, give us the strength and the boldness to do what you have assigned for us to do. And God, we gonna give you all the glory and all the praise. In your sweet son Jesus' name we ask it all, amen.